We're live?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'd like to, this is High Point Mayor Jay Wagner. I'd like to take this time to welcome everyone to this special meeting of the High Point City Council. Before we begin, I'll call the role of everyone. Well, do I need to actually call the role? Can I just acknowledge that everyone's here? Okay. All members of the City Council are present in the room today. The primary reason that we're meeting is for our ethics training for local government officials. This is a two-hour webinar that we're going to be watching. We will not be doing any business during that two hours. But following that, we will have a closed session for economic development and personnel, followed by some open session business on several items. Before we begin, let me let everybody know, this is a recorded webinar, so if you have questions, just write those down, make a note of those, and at the end of the presentation, we can, maybe our attorney can answer those questions, or one of them, one or both of them. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the clerk for an announcement before we begin.
Yes. I would like to take a moment to congratulate Mary Brooks, Deputy City Clerk. She has just graduated from the 2020 Clerk Certification Institute and has passed the exam.
Awesome. Congratulations.
A good bit behind her before she can become certified, so now she's moving forward with her continuing ed to get her additional points that's going to be required.
Awesome.
So if you will, just send congratulations to her in an email or whatever, and just let her know how much she's appreciated. She did great.
Great job, Mary.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, so as soon as our IT folks are ready to get us moving, we'll start this exciting, exciting clerk training.
Betty? So, I'm going to start out just with a little overview about the goals for this program. The first thing we're going to do is talk about legal and ethical standards. And next, identify key legal issues and ethical considerations for you, and also to discuss and compare views about civility among board members. So that's our game plan for today. Let's start out talking about ethics. What is ethics? I think most people think about ethics as basically what's right and what's wrong. We think it's important to distinguish between ethics and law. So one way of posing that question is, even if something is legally something you can do, if you do it, are you also acting ethically? If you can do it, does that mean you should do it? And we think about this as something like that you can consider as we move forward. First, we're going to talk about some key concepts. So one key concept is that your conduct, whatever it is, involves both legal requirements and ethical considerations. So there are specific legal things that we're going to talk about: voting, contracting, gifts and favors. These are things that come into play because of the legal requirements and the acts and votes that you do as elected officials. The three provisions that are listed below, the ones in bold, we're not going to have time to talk about those, but the chapter that you have in your materials on gifts and favors and ethics and contracting describes those. So those are there just for your information now. We also want to draw your attention to statutory provisions that actually require you to take this training and also to have an ethical code. This is a list of things in the statute that the legislature thinks you should be responsible for. As you'll see soon, there's not much that anybody can do to enforce these things, but I think it's important for you to understand that you do have ethical obligations listed in the statute that is an expectation when you're in office. So one way to think of this is, when you're acting in your official capacity, you have a choice about how to act. You should evaluate the legal issues that might be presented, and also, don't stop there, also consider the ethical factors in deciding how to act. So again, you can think of this as kind of an equation. So ask yourself, is it legal? We hope if you have something that is illegal, that you can look at the resources that we give you. If you determine that it's not legal, we expect that you're not going to do it. If it is legal, we would expect that you might ask a second question: is it ethical? Is it the right thing to do? And that's your decision.
And so let's start by delving a bit more into the question of, excuse me, is it ethical? And because of the General Assembly's requirement of upholding integrity in the office, in our view, the concept of civility is directly tied to the concepts of acting ethically. And so we'd like to have an opportunity, we'd like to give you an opportunity to tell us what you think. Jamar, if you could please pull the first chat, open chat box up on the screen. If everyone could please type in one word that means civility to you, just when you think of civility in conducting your business on behalf of your town, what does civility mean? And when Freida and I have taught this in live sessions, we see very similar responses. Freida, respect is getting a high listing.
Dignity, professionalism, lots of respect.
Honest, dignity, politeness, respect.
Listening, I like that.
Ah, humility, that's a good one.
Kindness, wow, I like that. Decency, friendliness.
Yeah, outstanding.
Continuity, that's interesting.
Continuity is an interesting thought, yes, I agree. Respect, respectful.
Empathy, factual.
Politeness, these are all great responses.
Calm.
Yes, we all could use a bit of calm, couldn't we?
In our life.
Yes, thank you.
And humility.
Okay, and now, Jamar, if you could reset the chat box, we'd like for you to turn your brain in the other direction and type in one word that describes a lack of civility. Rude, very good, Kingsman. These are outstanding thoughts, and these are very consistent with the...
Uncaring, hostility, chaos.
And Freida, these are very consistent with the responses we've gotten in our live sessions in the past. Petty, snarky, I like that, obnoxious, backstabber.
Self-centered.
These are out, inattentive, outstanding, disrespectful, rude, self-serving. Yes, we'll be talking about self-serving during the course of our time this morning. Lazy, that's a good one, too. All of these are great responses and are in line with what we view as civility and a lack thereof. Jamar, I'm afraid we need to move on to the next slide, but Freida, chime on in.
I just wanted to mention, we're doing some essentials programs around the state for newly-elected folks, and we have a video that we've created, and it has, it's humorous, but we have people who are doing a mock board member. And there's a lot of snide remarks, and we've been talking to people about, when you're not acting with civility and you're doing it in a meeting with people live streaming, it becomes something that you might think about how that reflects when people are watching, and not just the people in the room. So these kinds of, you know, positive kinds of civility that you can have, and if you don't have it, it's going to spread wide.
That's a great point. And that ties right in with a reminder of what Freida just mentioned to you previously, which are the legal obligations that you must, that you have under state law in writing and adopting your local codes of ethics. The statutes require that you address these principles. And in our view, upholding integrity and the independence of your office is directly tied to that concept of civility. And when the legal obligation to adopt a local code of ethics was first enacted by the General Assembly, the School of Government worked with some local elected officials, local attorneys, boards, and managers in developing a model code, which I believe many of you probably have adopted. And in that model code, it addresses specifically measures that embody acting with integrity. And the lettering in blue very much reflects the opinions that you all just expressed a few minutes ago: acting with respect, honoring opinions, recognizing that you are part of a larger group. So our compliments to you all on your good thinking on what represents civility and what represents a lack of civility. And to Freida's point on the training that is going on in our Essentials Program, by acting with civility and upholding the integrity of your office, it provides you with the opportunity to serve as a model of civility for your citizens, for your employees, for your appointed board members, for your community as a whole, and for other public entities that you interact with. So by fulfilling your legal obligation to uphold the duties of your office and conducting those duties with integrity and civility, you really do have an opportunity to model that for a large number of groups.
So we've been talking about this legal obligation that you have to take this training and to have a code. Unfortunately, or maybe not, there's nothing in the law that provides any enforcement mechanism. So compliance is basically voluntary, unless the actions that you take violate a state law or a state law that provides a remedy. But again, as we pointed out, there is the law of the court of public opinion, and the point being, this is something that you should aspire to and do, but if you don't do it, there's not really anything that anybody can do. There is the concept of censure. So what is censure? Censure is actually a statutory and constitutional thing at the federal and state level, but at local government, there isn't any authority specifically or any procedure that exists. So generally speaking, what we think about when we think about censure is when, if a majority of the board thinks somebody has done something that violates their ethics code or otherwise doesn't prove, that the board thinks that it reflects badly on the council, there's something that they can do. They can adopt a resolution expressing dissatisfaction with the member's conduct. It has no legal effect, but it's a way for the board to say, we think you violated the code, or we think you're behaving in a way that's not appropriate. The other thing I'll mention is that there is a common law, basically court judge-made concept called a motion. You might have heard of this. This is something that, at least one court has said that you can do. It's a very high standard. This is something that allows a board to remove somebody from that board because of a very high misbehaving, not carrying out the duties of the office, and it's a very high standard to do. That makes sense. I mean, these are elected officials, and generally, we expect that the citizens will decide whether they want that person to stay in office or not. But there is a situation if somebody is just not capable of complying with the law and acting appropriately within the office, it is something you can do. And there's a blog post that I'm linked to that slide that talks about what the standard is. Some cities and some states have constitutional recall. We do not. There are a couple of, a handful of cities that have recall as a special provision in their charter, but otherwise, it's not something that's generally allowed.
And so now, let's turn our attention to conflicts of interest, which are thought of broadly, and many people define in many different ways, but what we're going to focus on primarily at this point in the presentation is a discussion of what the law requires, but also to get you thinking about that dual question: is it legal? Is it ethical? Because that is a framework for analyzing conflicts of interest when you are confronted with them. So we're going to start initially in discussing conflicts of interest in the context of your obligation to vote. You, as a governing board member with a city, and if any of our friends with county boards happen to watch this webinar, we want to make the point that this applies to them as well, you have a statutory duty to vote. It is a very strong obligation, and it's grounded in the principle that city and county governing boards act as bodies. You have very little legal authority to take action officially on behalf of your unit of government by yourself. So the primary way in which you transact public business and fulfill the duties of the office to which you have been elected is by voting on matters when you are lawfully convened as a body. There is no statutory authority for you to unilaterally recuse yourself from voting. Instead, you can only be excused by your fellow board members from voting where there is a conflict of interest that has been defined by statute. So when it comes to matters that are before your board for action, the starting point for your analysis always is, first, I'm required by law to vote unless there is a conflict of interest as defined by statute, in which case then, I can seek to be excused from voting, or in some instances, the law actually prohibits you from voting. Now, what happens if you don't vote? For cities in North Carolina, and statutorily, this only applies to cities, if the council member is present, has not been excused from voting, and simply then fails to vote, the member is going to be counted as voting yes. So the clerk will record your yes, your vote as a yes. So if you sit on your hands and don't vote, you're going to be recorded as voting yes. Some county boards have included this rule in their local board's procedures, but the statute that you see cited on the screen, General Statute 168-75, only applies to cities. Now, there is a limited authority for cities, and only for cities, to, in one instance, abstain from voting. So I just said that you generally don't have the authority to recuse yourself or to abstain, but you do have, in one instance, the limited authority to abstain from voting, and that occurs on the repeal or amendment of a zoning ordinance. And if you abstain as a city council member, this again does not apply to counties, but for cities, if you do not vote, the default yes rule does not come into play. You will be recorded as abstaining. Now, the requirements for the majority members voting to pass still take, still applies, and that your lack of vote may then impact the degree to which the repeal or the amendment of the zoning ordinance is going to pass on its first reading. But generally, for cities, this is the one instance in which you have the legal authority to abstain. Otherwise, you either vote, or you seek to be excused from voting for a legally valid reason.
Okay, a couple of things I want to add to that. When the count is a yes, over the years, we've gotten questions, not regularly, occasionally somebody will ask if a member is excused from the meeting. In other words, they're not going to come to the meeting, and the board has excused them from that. There's no actually need to do that. If a person just doesn't come, can't come, they can't come. But sometimes, people have argued that if we excuse that person from the meeting, and they didn't, they were never at the meeting, that that counts as a yes, and that is not the law. So it's important to know that this counts as a yes thing assumes that the member has been at the meeting and has been, is there or has been excused, but it doesn't ever apply to somebody who was never at the meeting at the first place.
And Freida, that would apply also for the limited authority to abstain as well, correct?
Right. And we had some questions in the Essentials that we've been doing about whether you have to say why you're abstaining, and I think there's no requirement for that. You can just say, I'm not voting.
And we just got a question. I think this is a great question to provide a point of clarification. Define city versus town. Under North Carolina law, those terms are interchangeable. So the statutes define city incorporated municipalities includes city, town, village, borough.
It's all the same.
It's all the same. So city or town, the legal distinction is really between cities and counties, or rather, incorporated municipalities and counties. But when you hear us say city, we also mean town, village, borough.
And if you want to be a borough or a village or anything else, you can do that by local ordinance.
That's true.
If you're not happening, being a town, you can be a city. All right, so moving along. Let's talk about voting. So we've talked a little bit, this duty to vote, but there are different kinds of rules for different kinds of things that you vote on, and this can be very confusing. Generally speaking, there's a statute that Norma was just talking about that lays out the general rules, but then there are specific rules for certain kinds of things. And we're going to walk through this in a sort of chart that Norma brilliantly created. The main thing about this is, what we want you to do, if you have a question about what the rules are about voting, especially with respect to conflicts of interest, the first thing you want to know is, what is it that you're voting on? Because depending what the matter is, different rules apply. Does that make sense? So the first thing you ask is, does it involve, in this case, we'll start out with, a legislative land use issue? So that's rezoning, special use permit, actually, no, not, sorry, take that back, not special use, just the legislative. So rezoning, text amendment, just those two things. And when we say that that's legislative, it means that's discretionary. There's no standards. You get to say, yes, I think that's a good idea, put a shopping center there or not. So in that situation, when you're doing legislative land use vote, if you have, and this is in that statute, if you have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial interest in the matter, then you are prohibited from participating in the vote or voting at all. So this is, if you have financial interest that meets that standard, you are prohibited from voting. All right, let's say it's quasi-judicial, which is the special use permit, or an appeal of a personnel decision. That's a situation where you are kind of acting as a judge. So you're not, you don't have discretion, I think that special use permit is a good idea. In that situation, you have to apply the statutory requirements and the requirements in your ordinance, and you don't get to decide just whether you like it or not. You have to take the evidence that you have, apply it to the standard like a judge would, and in that situation, because there are rules that apply that mean that, which mean that the applicant, if they meet all those requirements, they are allowed to have it. You have to give them the permit. So in that situation, they have a due process right to have a person making, or the board making, the decision to be not biased one way or the other. They need to be a judge of that and not using their own discretion. So in that situation, the statute requires anybody who has a fixed opinion, like I've been saying, I think this is a really bad thing to do in the press or to anybody prior to the hearing, anything, if you have information that you gained, information that was not, that didn't come through the hearing, if you have a close familial business or other relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome. So these are, this is a list of things that is designed to make sure that the people who are making this decision don't have a bias one way or the other. So unfortunately, they don't really define close familial relationship. I think it's probably going to be, you know, mother, father, one step down, not cousins, I don't think. Close, we just have to use common sense there. But if you have this kind of vote that you're doing, people will be looking for that at times, and this is the only place where something other than financial interest is the thing that is relevant. So if you have any of that situation, you're prohibited again from participating or voting. And this statute also has a provision that allows some, a third party to challenge whether you have the ability to vote on that. So the next one is contracting. This is GS 14234, which is a criminal statute that prohibits you from benefiting, you or your spouse, from benefiting from a contract with your own unit. And again, this is a basic prohibition, and Norma's going to talk at length about this. So I'm going to skip on to the next thing. So then we have everything else. So the everything else here is the statute that we were talking about earlier that says you have, actually, it says you may be excused from voting on anything that involves your own financial interest or your own official conduct. Neither of those things are defined in the statute. When it comes to your own official conduct, we think probably the only thing that I've ever been ever able to think of is perhaps somebody is up for censure, the board wants to censure them. I think that's a situation where the matter would be involving their own official conduct, and he or she could be excused from voting.
All right. Now, Freida, before we go on, Sheila has posed a question that I think we should just highlight for everyone, because we're going to be talking about this very point when we come to our scenarios. So Sheila raises the question, does ethical come into consideration with voting? And I think the answer to that is, it depends. And so Sheila, if you and your group wouldn't mind waiting for a few minutes, once we finish discussing the law, we're going to walk through some particular fact patterns, and we're going to ask you all to tell us whether or not you think voting on the matter is ethical, and then whether or not voting on the matter... and then whether or not voting on the matter is legal. And we're going to discuss in more detail considerations of ethics coming into play in the context of your statutory obligation to vote.
All right. So getting back to the, the main voting statute, we talked a little bit about your own official conduct. What about your own financial in, interest? So there's no really definition of that. And it's, and it's not actually written in a way that means that it, it has to be, the person has to be. It says it may be excused from voting. It doesn't say who does the, the excusing, but we generally say it makes the most sense for the board to vote to excuse somebody. But somebody could also say, I think I have a, a, a conflict and I'm, I would like to be excused. It can come up in any, in any, a number of ways. Notice also that it doesn't say financial, financial benefits. So it says financial interest, which could be a situation where somebody might benefit, but also it could be a situation in which it would be detrimental to that person. And this gives me an opportunity to say, when we talk about conflict of interest, why do we have that? Why do we have that, that, that standard for voting? My thinking is this, we want people to be able to vote in the way that is best for the town. We don't want them to have to vote on something where they have a conflict in terms of the, the effect on them personally, as opposed to what's best for the town. And so we give those people an opportunity to say, maybe it's best that I don't vote at all because I can't be neutral. If a person feels like they can't be nu, neutral and, and vote on, on the basis of what's best to the city, it's best to let them be excused. So again, we don't have anything that defines financial interest. But I've thought, thought about this in, in terms of some kinds of factors you might consider. So for example, you know, if you're raising taxes or, or lowering them, doesn't happen all the time. You know, everybody in the city is going to be affected by that, including everybody on the council. So obviously that can't be a, a standard. So we think about it as sort of a continuum. So look about how, if, if lots of people are going to be affected and that includes some or, or all of the board members, that seems like it's not really something that you would, should be excused from voting on because it affects everybody. On the other end of things, if it's only the, this road that this, the city, city council member lives on, that's going to be repaved, we might think that's kind of a conflict, right? You can also think about it in terms of how significant the impact would be. And also how, how likely it would be that the person would experience the financial interest or detriment. And these are standards that come from case, cases that have applied this standard. So again, it, it might take some time. You might consult with your attorney if there's a question as to whether there's a financial interest or not. But you can look to these kinds of standards to figure out whether this is a basis for being excused. Recognizing that the default is, we expect everybody to, to vote unless they have a basis for not. So this is just another depiction of it, just so you can see sort of where these provisions are in the statutes. The main voting statute is this broad provision that's in 16875 for cities, 153A44 for counties. And this is the, the, for, for the cities, th, this is where you find the defaults. You have to vote and the, and counts as, as, as a yes, if you don't vote. The other three provisions that I've talked about are in separate statutes. Again, legislative zoning decisions, quasi judicial, judicial decisions in which you have to fix opinion and public contracts. And those are specific statutes that have voting provisions.
And so let's talk a bit more about self benefiting in public contracting, which is Freda said, is a criminal statute. And we want to make sure that you all are aware of this specific prohibition because it has consequences not only for you, but also for your unit of government as a whole. So under this statute, general statute 14 dash 234, if you're involved at any point in the contracting process in making or administering the contract and governing board members, you all are always involved in making or administering a contract the way the statute defines those terms, even if the matter, the contract does not come before you for a vote because you have the ultimately legal authority over all contracts with your city. You are, as board members, are always involved in making or administering a contract. And so therefore, if you or your spouse derive a direct benefit under that contract and a direct benefit is defined by the statute as you or your spouse owning more than 10% of the company, the vendor, the entity that the city is contracting with, you or your spouse receive income or commission directly under that contract, or you or your spouse acquire property under that contract. Then unless an exception applies, the violation of this statute is punishable as a class one misdemeanor and the contract is rendered void by operation of the statute. So there are consequences both for the board member or the board member's spouse if this statute is violated, but also for the unit of government because the contract itself is rendered void. And when you have a void contract, that means it legally does not exist any longer. And your unit of government loses the legal authority to expend public funds under that contract. So arguably, it would be an unlawful expenditure of public funds to make a payment under a void contract. So this is a, a conflict of interest statute that you need to be careful about, again, because there are consequences both for the conflicted official as well as the, the unit of government itself. There are a few exceptions to this statute, to this prohibition. And if an exception applies, the contract itself can be legal, but the board member that would derive the benefit or the board member's spouse would still be prohibited from participating in any discussions on the contract or for voting on the contract. And we're not going to get into a detailed description of all of these exceptions. They are described fully in the chapter, the ethics chapter that is in your materials. And also the voting guide chart that was posted on the course website. On the back of the voting guide chart is a process flow with specific definitions of the conflicts of interest and the provisions under this particular statute. So please be aware of this special type of financial interest, so to speak, because it is somewhat different than a general financial interest that Freda talked about earlier. And unless an exception applies that would permit the contract, otherwise this is not a conflict that can cure, be cured by being excused from voting. So unless an exception applies, the contract itself is illegal and the board member cannot cure that conflict, excuse me, by being excused from voting. If the, one of the very limited exceptions does apply, that is when the conflicted official is prohibited from participating or voting. But you first have to make sure that the contract itself falls within a definition of an exception. And so now.
Just, it might be worth just mentioning that one of the most important exceptions under that statute is the provision that it says that you can actually contract with your board members if you're a town or city, village, village or whatever, under 15,000. There are some things, hoops you have to jump through to do that. And we'll talk about later whether that's something that is a good thing to do, but it is something that applies to a number of small towns.
It does. And sometime, and some people refer to that as a small jurisdiction exception. We do discuss that in the ethics chapter that's available in the materials. It is a very narrow exception, limited to very small contracts. And there are very specific procedural requirements. The statute mandates the city council follow in order to make the contract legally valid. So if you find yourself in a situation, if you are an incorporated municipality with a population of less than 15,000, you are legally permitted to enter into certain kinds of contracts with your governing board members. But we encourage you to consider carefully first the legal aspects of it and make sure the contract falls within the parameters of the statute. Second, that you follow the procedural requirements outlined in the statute so that the contract will not end up being void. And third, consider ethical questions that may arise in the course of doing business with one of your fellow board members.
Okay. And that's a good segue to what, what we're going to do next. So we're back to this question about ethical and legal. And here, the question about whether ethical comes into consideration when, when voting, we're going to have a, a couple of scenarios and we're going to ask you that very question. So let's start here. So here's a scenario. A city council member also serves on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. The chamber is seeking grant funds, as they do, from the city to promote, to promote tourism. The grant comes before the city council for the consider, for consideration. Now, first, we're going to ask you this question. Is it ethical for the council member to participate in the discussions and vote on the grant award? And why? And why not? So we'd like you to type in your.
Jamar, if you could bring the chat box up. There we go.
So tell us what you think. We're, we don't want the legal answer. We would just want that, want to know if you think it's ethical.
So this is an opportunity for you to just give us your gut reaction.
Is it right? Is it bad? Why? Why not?
Or if you think it's ethically permissible, tell us why. And there is not a right or wrong answer to this question.
We're getting a lot, several people who are saying that it's not ethical, but that, that they're not saying why. Why isn't it? Split opinion.
That's okay. And at the end of this particular chat, Freda, we're not giving the audience a right or wrong answer on, is it ethical? Because that is for them, the board members themselves to determine.
So I'm just going to say that a lot of people have been saying that they think it's not ethical. And I, I assume that that, that's because it doesn't look right. It seems like there's some personal in, in, interest. But other people are saying mostly that since there's no financial gain, that it's, that it's, that it's ethical. I think that is reasonable.
I think that's a reasonable summary of the points that are coming in.
Ah, here's another one. Yes, with prior, with prior disclosure.
We're going to talk, talk when we get to the end of our discussion of conflicts of interest about how to deal with the appearance of a conflict. And I think prior disclosure is a point you're going to be touching on a little later, Freda.
Okay. Well, this, thanks for all your great responses. Can we move that away? And the next question is, is it legal? This, this time, we're going to ask you to just say yes or no. So Jamar, if you can put up the poll.
We've got a poll coming up. And we'd like for you to just simply answer the question, click yes or no. And for this one, Freda, I believe you will be giving them a specific answer.
Yes, I will. It looks like most people are getting it right.
Ah, outstanding. Yes, everyone is voting now. And in just a minute, Freda will ask Jamar to broadcast the poll results and then you all can see how each other voted.
All right. Let's go for it. Okay. So most of you got that right. You can pull the poll away.
Yeah, it looks like the vast majority voted, yes, it's legal.
Yeah. So the answer is yes. It's not only legal, but the person would have a, a, a duty to vote, right? So, because there's no excuse, there's nothing that excuses that. And this is something to, we're just going to pause here and make the, make the point, this duty to vote, vote thing. You're told all the time that you should avoid even the appearance of, of, of a conflict. In this situation, the law requires you to vote even if it looks bad. And this is a situation where you might go to your attorney to say, I understand that I have a duty to vote. There's nothing, because I have no personal financial benefit and it doesn't regard any, my office, conduct in office, I have an obligation to vote. And we can talk later about the fact that maybe that's, that makes sense. A person who serves on the chamber obviously thinks that what the chamber does is good and might think that, yeah, that I think that's the best thing for the city and that's why I'm involved with, with that, that group. So it could look bad and it wouldn't be a surprise for somebody to say, maybe that person should, should abstain, but they don't have that right. So again, most people thought because there wasn't a financial in, interest, it wasn't unethical. But in the end, the question is, is it legal? And if it is, and there's nothing that prevents that person from voting, they have to do it. All right. Very good. How about this one? Oh, I'm going to talk about roles. So as I said, you know, lots of you do serve on nonprofit organizations. And I think you do that because you're interested and, and passionate about the things that those organizations do. And also those nonprofits like having you on there, probably because you're so nice and smart, but possibly because they think it will help them that when they go to you for grants and other things. And so it's important for you, when you're in those roles, to think about how you want to behave. So you can be on those. There's nothing that says you can't. But when it comes to funding, you know, you might say, you know, this is too much. Maybe we should ask for less. And even when you're there and there are other organizations, you need to be able to be objective as much as you can and give those other folks a shot at it. Other things, legal things that can happen. Let's say the, the, the commerce, Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, sorry, gets their, their grant and they, a couple of years later, they can't really account for how they spent it. And so now the, the council is like, well, they're, they're asking us for more money, but they can't even account for what they did before. Now you're kind of in a weird situation because you have a fiduciary duty to, to the nonprofit and to the council. And if the council wants to go into closed session and talk about what to do about this legal issue, or maybe the executive director of the, of the commerce is, is, needs to be fired, you know, you, you can be in the middle of these things. And you have to, it, it can be difficult for you to please both of the, these organizations. So I'm not saying that you don't need to serve on those nonprofits, but I think you should make it clear to them, are you serving there as a member of the council as a, as a liaison? Or are you serving as somebody who is going to advocate for the nonprofit? And again, I think that's something you need to think about when you join those organizations.
And Freda, before we move on, just to emphasize a point that you made earlier, it really is fundamental to the duty to vote statute. Many people felt, so, some of our audience felt that there, there was an appearance of conflict in this scenario. But the appearance of a conflict does not provide a legally valid basis for the member to be excused from voting. And that's where these difficult, sometimes these difficult situations arise. But there is, in this particular scenario, there is no legally valid basis to be excused from voting.
And even if that's, even if your code of ethics says that you should avoid the appearance of, of, of conflict, that does not override the statute. So this is statutory. Have we said that, Emma? You get, you get the idea.
Because we get this question a lot. It's a point that's, that's important to emphasize.
It's hard, you know, you can have, well, we'll have, give you some, some.
In fact, the next one, I think my, the next two scenarios might drive that point home.
Right. Okay. So the city council's mother owns property. So the city council's mother owns property adjacent to an area that the city is considering rezoning commercial. The mother's, member's mother is strongly opposed to the rezoning because it will affect her property value and has organized a vocal community opposition group. Now, is it ethical for the council member to vote on the rezoning petition? And if you want to, you can look at your slides, that chart that I showed you earlier and look and see what kind of vote this is and how you can be excused. First, we're going to talk about ethical. Is it ethical?
And Jamar, if you could pull up the chat box for the group so they can start typing in their views on whether it is ethical and why or why not.
Sorry, jumped ahead. Don't think about the legal part yet.
Correct, no law. Ah, interesting. The council member is an heir. Looks like most people are saying it is not ethical. Most people are focusing on the fact that this is a family member involved. We have one respondent, Freda, who recommends abstaining. An heir, no explanation required to abstain. It looks like most everybody, Freda, thinks that it's not ethical. But recognize that there might be a different answer under the law. And we see a good point raised in small towns where oftentimes council members are related by family or close friendship to many people within the town. And it would make these kinds of decisions very challenging for the board to make if everybody was prohibited from voting.
All right, let's move to the next question.
There we go.
I see the next question is, is it legal for the council member to vote on the rezoning petition? So now we're going to give the poll.
And if everyone could click the radio button, yes or no, let us know whether you think it is legal. And remember, there is no right or wrong answer on the ethical, but there will be on the legal, which Freda will reveal in just a minute.
Kind of mixed bag here.
Yes, we do. Voting on this one seems a bit closer than on our last poll question. It looks like the votes are just about in.
All right, let's see what she said. So the majority said it is legal. We had a strong minority that says it's not. Can you move the poll away? We will reveal the answer. So in this situation, look, remember that chart that I showed you earlier. The standard is you can be, you must not vote if you have a direct substantial and readily identifiable identifiable financial interest in the matter. So if there's no financial interest, if the person is not a co-owner, I don't think being an heir is enough because it has to be readily identifiable. So it definitely is something that the person is allowed to do with the new law, with not so new anymore. I think the person could abstain. So that might be an appropriate thing to do. But otherwise, even though this is something that I think most people would be, are you kidding me? He has to, or he or she can vote on his own mother's rezoning. The answer is yes, because of this strong policy of saying if you don't have a financial interest, you have to vote. And again, the person could certainly abstain.
And so now we're going to talk about another scenario. A city council member's sister is a local developer and has applied for a special use permit, hint, hint, a special use permit for a major project in the city. Jamar, could you bring up the chat box, please? We'd like to see what everyone has to say on the question, is it ethical for the council member to vote on the sister's permit? Special use permit. So do you think it is ethical? And if you have an opinion as to why you think it's ethical or not ethical, then please let us know. Looks like everybody, Freda, is saying, no, it's not ethical, or most likely. And many are connecting it to family. When we ask this, when we talk about this particular scenario, we typically have a very strong majority who believe that it is not ethical to vote on the sister's condition use permit. And it looks like the responses, by and large, are consistent with that. So Jamar, if you could take the chat box down for us. Thank you for your input, everyone. Now let's talk about whether or not it is legal. So is it legal for the council member to vote on her sister's application for a special use permit? Jamar, if you would bring up the polling box, please, so that people can vote. Oops, here comes the polling box. Is it legal? Just simply vote yes or no. What do you think the law requires in this instance? The results are coming in. Oh, Freda, my goodness, they're fairly split. You all, I think, might be surprised when we broadcast the results. Because it looks like there's a real close split. Despite the fact that everybody, by and large, felt that it was not ethical when it comes to whether or not it's legal, it looks like we're having a much more divided set of opinions. Jamar, would you please broadcast the results so everyone can see what the vote tally is? And it looks like it's just about dead even on whether or not it's legal. So Jamar, would you please take down the poll? And now, what is the answer? The answer is no, it is not legal. Remember that a special use permit is a quasi judicial matter, a matter in which you are not exercising your discretion, but you are determining whether or not, in this case, a special use permit fits within the parameters that are required for approval. That makes it a quasi judicial matter. And because the applicant is a family member, the council member is therefore prohibited from voting. Freda, would you remind folks, since you have the chart right in front of you, of the legal standard for being prohibited from voting in a quasi judicial matter?
I just want to say, yes, we'll do that in a minute. But I just want to say that I think this is very confusing from anybody who's not been doing this for 100 years like we have been. You know, you can see that it would be confusing to the public and the media. Oh, wait a minute, he had to vote on the thing with the mother, but he can't do it with the sister. What's the deal? And so it's really important to focus on the fact that it's not really about, you know, who's involved. It's the most important thing to focus on is what kind of a thing is it that you're voting on? Which is why Norma's chart is so helpful. So you can look at that and say, well, what are we doing? In this case, it's quasi judicial, so you look across and you'll see that that's the box that I said is the only situation where it can be, you can have a conflict with respect to somebody who's related. Every other provision has some aspect that is limited to a financial interest. But this is the one place where the person who has the relationship of some kind is relevant. Otherwise, it's just going to be, if you don't have a financial interest, it's not going to be an issue. So you can see how it's complicated. And I urge you to make good use of that chart. And if you have questions, talk to your attorney, read the chapter. And if all else fails, call us. So keep going, because there's more to come.
Yes, there are. And we're going to make it a little bit even more confusing now.
Just because we like it.
But also to underscore the importance of what Freda just said, which is, first and foremost, understand clearly what it is you're being asked to consider and asked to vote on. And if you are not certain of that when you're sitting at council meeting, under the rules of parliamentary procedure, it's completely appropriate to stop and ask the mayor or whoever is presiding, typically it will be the mayor, for clarification on the matter that's coming before you for vote. It's also important to review your board materials, your board packet, prior to the meeting. So that to the extent there is a matter that you think may trigger a potential conflict of interest, you have an opportunity to discuss it with your city attorney prior to the meeting so that you can be prepared, depending on what the legal answer is, not only to address and explain to your constituents what the law requires, but also potential ethics that are involved.
Yeah, it's a good point. And also, you might think about, if you think you might have a concern about ethics or that you just don't feel comfortable, you might just go ahead and ask the mayor if it's something, or the clerk or the attorney, is this something that I can abstain? Just in case, you know, if you're not sure, if it's something you think you might be able to abstain, you can, you know, make sure that you know that that's an option.
Absolutely.
It's a narrow exception, but it might come up.
And the ability to abstain, unfortunately, does not apply to the scenario we now have on the screen, which is, a city council is considering awarding a multimillion dollar construction contract to a council member's sister. The sister's company is the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So let's assume for the sake of this scenario, there are no irregularities in the bidding process. The council member's sister's company won the bid fair and square. Jamar, would you please bring up the open chat box? And let's see what our audience thinks. Is it ethical for the council member to vote on the award of her sister's construction contract? Let us know what you think ethically. What do you think about voting? Is it ethical or not? And please let us know why. If you want to share with us why. And this scenario, in our experience from past trainings, Freda and I have always found that there is a pretty big split in the group on the question of whether it's ethical.
Having to do with this, because it was bid, that that makes it fair, I guess, is the idea?
Right, that the idea being, if it was fairly, if the business was bid, if the contract was bid properly and the business won the contract fair and square, then that takes care of questions of ethics.
But because we have both been in this area of contracting for a long time, we know that if you're the other people who are bidding, how fair do you think it's likely to, that they will think that maybe the sister got some information that they didn't? So it's, the bidding is a good thing, but not necessarily going to make the other bidders feel like it's ethical.
And we have discovered over the years that people's opinions on this question sometimes vary depending on the size of their jurisdiction. And so in large jurisdictions, there's more opportunity for competitive bidding. There's generally a larger pool of bidders and available contractors. But if you get in very small areas of the state, it sometimes can be challenging to have a bid process where a contractor doesn't, you have an entire pool with no connection whatsoever to all of the members of your governing board. So it looks like on the question of ethics here, that the group is really split. And we appreciate those thoughts. Jamar, if you could please take the chat box down now. And let's see what everyone thinks on the law. Jamar, if you would pull up the voting poll. Same question, awarding a multimillion dollar contract. But let's see on, is it legal, what you all think? Is it legal for the council member to vote on the award of her sister's construction contract? And we have some very interesting voting results going on right now. I always feel a little guilty, Freda, as you and I conduct these webinars, because we can see the votes as they come in. Our audience won't see them until we broadcast the results. And I think we're getting to that point. We're pretty close to having vote tallies now coming in. Although some people aren't voting, perhaps they're just waiting for the answer.
They know we're going to tell them the answer.
That's right. Jamar, would you please broadcast the results for our audience? And so as you all can see, the vast majority of you felt that it was legal to vote. If you could take the poll question down now, Jamar, and we'll reveal the answer. So despite the fact that many of you felt that it was unethical, you also voted that it was legal. And the answer is yes. Assuming no financial benefit, the council member is required, under the duty to vote statute, to vote. The law that is triggered in this scenario is the self benefiting under public contracting statute, GS 14 dash 234, where you are prohibited from voting, excuse me, if an exception applies to a contract under which you or your spouse receive one of those three prohibited direct benefits, having more than 10% ownership interest in the company, receiving income or commission directly under the contract, or acquiring property under the contract. And if that, one of those three prohibited direct benefits is present, then unless an exception applies, the contract itself is legally invalid and is prohibited. And remember, this is the type of conflict that cannot be cured by being excused from voting, unlike a more general financial interest. Now, we're going to assume then, for the sake of this discussion, that neither the council member nor her spouse has any of those three prohibited direct benefits in the sister's company. And assuming that that is the case, then the contract is legally valid. The prohibition against self benefiting under public contracting is not triggered. The duty to vote statute, which is your undergirding obligation, kicks in and you would be required to cast a vote, even though it may make you feel uncomfortable or there might be an appearance of a conflict. So this underscores again how confusing these various situations that you will face as board members can be.
Yeah, so first, you have to vote when it's the mom. Then you can't vote when it's the sister with the special use permit. But you have to vote if it's the sister who's the contractor. You can imagine how confusing that can be to yourselves and also to the public. And I also want to make the point that this is a situation that if the abstention provision was broader, I'm sure a person in this situation would love to be able to abstain, but they can't. They can just do it for that limited.
Legislative zoning, not special use permit and not contracting.
And so this is the law and so the person has to vote. I guess, you know, they could vote no if they want to, if they don't get along with their sister, but they do have the duty to vote. You can imagine situations which would be, again, similar to the situations where you're a member of a nonprofit organization that has a contract with you. When things go bad, it's a very awkward situation to be in. Let's say this, you know, sometimes, very rarely, very rarely, big contracting, construction projects go wrong. Rarely, right? Sometimes you end up in closed session with your attorney, talking about whether to, you know, take the contractor off the project. That would be awkward if that's your close relative in that situation. So not saying, not saying that the sister should not.
Be awarded the contract.
But it comes up and it's something just to think about and how you can.
And in fact, if the sister's company is the lowest responsive responsible bidder, the unit actually has a legal obligation to award the contract to this company. They don't have a legally valid basis to reject that otherwise lowest responsive responsible bidder simply because the company is owned by a board member's sister. So the board member is really in a catch 22 here. Let's move on to the next one. Our final scenario. Our final scenario, excuse me, for which we'd like to get your opinion one more time on ethical is this. An engineer under contract with the city to design and upgrade to the city's water system is then elected to council. So you have a contractor, you have an individual who already had a preexisting contract with the city, decides to run for election, is elected. Now, the question for you to consider is, is it ethical for the city to continue to use that council member's engineering services after she takes office? So Jamar, if you could bring up the open chat box, let's see what people think about this one. Is it ethical for you to continue to use this engineer's services after this engineer joins city council? And we posed, we included this question, this scenario, because invariably, right around, right after election time, we always get at least one or two questions from newly elected members who find themselves in some situation similar to this. So let's see what people are saying. Boy, there's a real divergence of opinion here. Many are saying, yes, it's ethical because it was done prior to the election and the engineer was not involved in making or administering the contract. Some are focusing on renewal. Perhaps ethical to continue now on the project, but not to renew after the engineer takes office. Some are saying, no, it's not ethical at all.
Yes, so there's a thought of let them complete it and then no, nothing in the future.
Interesting. All right, Jamar, if you could take down the chat box now, let's see what the law says. And now's your chance, one more time to vote. So Jamar, if you could bring up the poll question, is it legal? So what do you all think? Is it legal for the city to continue to use this engineer's services after she takes the oath of office? See what everyone thinks. Now, the voting is pretty one sided. We're not going to tell you which side until we broadcast the results. Not much of, well, it's starting to get a little closer. Actually, no, not very much, Freida. It looks like there's a pretty strong majority opinion here. Jamar, if you could broadcast the results for us, please. And as you can see, most of you believe that it was legal to continue to use those services. So Jamar, if you could take down the poll and let's reveal the answer. Excuse me. So is it legal? I'm afraid the answer is no. Once the council member takes office, continuing to use her engineering services is prohibited under the prohibition against self benefiting in public contracting unless a small jurisdiction exception applies. And that's the exception that we mentioned earlier for cities that have less than, population of less than 15,000, in which case the contract could be canceled and then it could be entered into a new after the council member takes office, consistent with that exception. But generally speaking, and here, the point of this scenario is this. Just because the contract was in existence prior to the member taking office, that is not in and of itself an exception to the prohibition against self benefiting in public contracting. And so you do need to be mindful, especially if you are a newly elected member, if you were doing business with the city prior to being elected to office, that business relationship can no longer continue unless the contract fits within one of the exceptions to the otherwise strong criminal statute that prohibits self benefiting in public contracting.
So basically, what happens according to our criminal law colleagues, the minute that person takes the oath and is in office, that contract is void. And so they can just void the contract. And if there is an exception, they can go through the process to create a new valid contract.
But importantly, there is not an exception to this prohibition against self benefiting under public contracting for contracts that preexisted that individual's election to council.
And just to follow up on that, sometimes people say, I wish the Board of Election would, you know, tell us about that, but that's not really their job. But sometimes we get the question about, especially if there's somebody running against the person who has the contract. The question sometimes comes to us, can we say that they can't run? It's not that they can't run, it's that if they do run, they have to understand that they won't be able to continue with the contract again unless there is an exception that allows it.
And Freida, I think important to also remind everyone that this prohibition, and we just had a point that was raised by one of our, one of our attendees, or webinar participants, excuse me, is that yes, this prohibition applies to spouses as well. So let's take this exact same scenario we see on the screen. And instead of the engineer herself being elected to council, let's say the engineer's husband was elected to council. The result legally would still be the same. The contract would be prohibited. The criminal prohibition would be triggered. The contract is now void once the husband were to take the oath.
There's also a question here that says, what if the spouse is not in the same household? I don't think that makes any difference. I don't know.
I mean, the statute uses the term spouse, which we have always interpreted to mean lawfully wedded spouse under the North Carolina law.
And then there's another question about can the council member be excused? Again, this is something that you can't, you can't excuse the person. And the statute, it's kind of weirdly worded, but it basically says, even if everybody else votes and that person doesn't, it's still a violation unless there's an exception that allows them to not vote and have the contract.
And so unless this particular engineering contract fell within one of the narrow exceptions, the contract itself becomes void and becomes prohibited. And this is not a conflict that can be cured by simply being excused from voting.
And again, this is very, this is very confusing. But if you go back to that lovely chart that we talked about, you'll see that there's a, the second to the last category is contract. And that's what we're talking about here. And that gives you the information about what the standard is. And that's a situation where there is an exception that applies and the board wants to use that exception. That's the circumstance where the person cannot vote. But it's not just that they are excused. All of that other stuff has to be in place.
And I'm afraid the fact that the contract is 90% complete doesn't necessarily provide any relief from this. There is a provision in 14-234 that does allow a local government to seek the advice of the Local Government Commission, LGC, if there is a contract otherwise in violation of 14-234 that we're canceling it would create an undue hardship or some threat to public health, safety and welfare. I'm not sure this particular contract would fall into the category of contracts that's intended under the statute.
And just a thought that I have is if this is going to be, in some cases, this might be really disruptive. It is okay, I mean legally, the person who's got, who has become an elected official can transfer that, sign that contract to somebody else. So it doesn't necessarily mean you have to stop that in the middle of the, of the construction. You can, it's legal for anybody to assign a contract, usually with the approval of the other person on the contract. So it's not necessarily the case that it just has to stop.
Right. There are ways that the city can continue on with the project. The point is, the point is, is the contract is going to be void. Criminal misdemeanor is going to be triggered. So if a city is finding itself in a situation like this, they need to talk with their city attorney and determine how to move forward in a way that is going to best serve the city's needs and also avoid having a brand new member on their first day after taking the oath of office, having committed a class one misdemeanor. And finally, one, excuse me, let's see. We've got a question from David, unmarried long-term partner. Yes, we get that question. An unmarried long-term partner is not considered a spouse under North Carolina law. And that creates heartburn, at least for purposes of 14-234, the contracting prohibition. North Carolina does not, law does not recognize common law marriage. So there is no such thing as common law marriage in this state. Now, there might be, and let's take a moment to go all the way back to Freida's discussion at the beginning of our session about the general duty to vote statute and being excused, seeking to be excused if there is a financial interest. So if the, in this scenario that we're looking at, the engineer's long-term live-in partner was elected to council, 14-234 would not be triggered. However, if they were living together, then arguably, sharing finances, then arguably that affects continuing on with the contract. Let's say the contract comes up for renewal. And that does affect the new council member's financial interest. And that would be an instance in which at that point, the council member could seek to be excused from voting. Assuming 14-234 has not been triggered, the council members always need to analyze all potential conflicts as to whether or not it generally affects their own direct financial interest, in which case to seek to be excused from voting.
We have a suggest, what about if the member does not take the oath of office until the contract is completed? I don't think that works. You know, the person is going, if they don't take the office, they're not in office. That means either there's a vacancy or there's somebody holding over. But I just, I think that doesn't make any sense. They can't be on the board and without taking the office. So there is a, there's a provision in the statute that says if somebody refuses to take the office or doesn't want to be in it, then there's a vacancy. So I think that would be a risky thing to do.
We have one question about children under the conflict of interest in public contracting statute, the criminal statute we've been talking about. No, the prohibition, the universe of the prohibition only extends to the board member or the board member's spouse, not to children.
But the analysis that you just did with the live-in partner would apply to children if, so if there's, if it's, if it's an unemancipated.
Unemancipated minor. Or even if the child was an adult and the child was living in the household. If that child was contributing to the family's income, let's say it's an adult, the child is an adult.
The point is, it's not about the other person. Unless we're talking about spouse, you're always going to be looking at the financial interest of the city councilor person, not about the other person. So whether it's children, friends, whatever, if there's no financial interest benefit or detriment to the person who's doing the voting, that's what you're looking at.
Correct. And so we're seeing other permutations on this same question and it's time for us to move on. But let's say generally speaking, Freida, when it comes to the contracting conflict of interest, that conflict only applies to the member and the member's spouse. Taking one step back, the members own, the conflict of interest that may arise regarding the member's own financial interest is just that, the member's own financial interest. So if we are talking about adult children who aren't contributing to the household or we're talking about friends, neighbors, in-laws, ex-laws, et cetera, again, unless that individual, in some, them winning the contract affects the member's own financial interest. Generally speaking, a conflict is not going to be found.
Okay, so let's wrap this up this way. We had this question earlier about is ethical, are ethical issues involved in voting? Here's the answer to that question. Certainly, there are going to be situations where it looks unethical for them to vote. What you should take away from this is that there are legal situations where you don't have a choice. You almost never have the option of voting or not voting. You either have to or in that one situation, you can abstain. So ethics comes into it, but you can't make a decision just because you think it's not ethical. You have to look at what the law says you have to do. I hope that's clear now.
Yes, and that's a great segue to the issue of then managing perceptions.
Right.
Because you might be forced, you might find yourself in a situation where you are required by law to vote, but there is, because there is no actual conflict of interest, but there is an appearance of a conflict. And so we oftentimes will get questions from board members about how to help manage, what do I do? This looks like a conflict, but it in fact legally is not. Freida, do you have any words of wisdom for our audience on that point?
Yeah, and we've mentioned this already, but I think it's important to make sure you're transparent about it. If you know coming up to a vote that there's a situation, there was a situation where somebody had a, their brother was the owner of a business that they had to do something related to. And people, and the council member had to vote because there was no exception. And she got some slack from the, from the public that she didn't tell people in advance that this, you know, her brother was involved in this issue. So she did the right thing in terms of voting because she had to. But sometimes it's helpful to say, look, I know I have this situation. I've been advised by my attorney that I have no option of abstaining. And that helps. And you can do that as early as you possibly can so that it doesn't, it's not a surprise to your colleagues on the board. And just make sure that people understand that this is something you have to do.
Very good. And so now we're going to shift gears on you again. We've been talking a lot about conflicts of interest in voting because that is, as we said at the beginning, a significant part of how you fulfill your official duties in office is by voting at your board meetings. But we also want to take a few minutes to talk about gifts and favors because this is another criminal statute that folks aren't as aware of as, say, bribery or embezzlement. We're hoping that we don't need to explain that in any great detail. But we do want to hit on this statute, which is also a criminal statute, that prohibits local and state officials and employees from accepting gifts and favors from certain vendors and contractors. Again, as Freida talked about in the very beginning of our session, one of the principles that undergirds these statutes that we've been talking about is that the focus of your, performing your duties is to serve the public interest, not to use your public position for your own personal interest. And in this particular, for this particular statute, it not only incorporates that principle, but it also incorporates the principle of fairness and open competition in your contracting so that there is not potential favoritism awarded. And so with those print, undergirding principles in mind, let's look at what this statute, General Statute 133-32, which is a criminal statute prohibits. It prohibits, you see on the left-hand side of your screen, someone who is representative of a contractor. But I want you to think broadly about the definition of a contractor. The statute speaks to any contractor or vendor. So this would be any business or individual who has done business with your unit of government within the previous year, is doing so currently, or is a potential future vendor or contractor. Anyone who falls into that category is prohibited from giving a gift to a prohibited recipient. And the prohibited recipients are prohibited from accepting the gift. And the prohibited recipients are public officers and employees who are involved in the contracting process and also involved in inspecting or supervising construction. So basically, as governing board members, just as we said, you are subject to, always subject to the prohibition against self benefiting in public contracting, you are also always subject to this prohibition as well because you have the ultimate legal authority over the contracts with your unit of government. So unless an exception applies, you are prohibited from accepting gifts or favors from vendors or contractors who have done business with your city within the previous 12 months, are doing so currently, or potential future. And the statute does not define who a potential future vendor or contractor is. So you do need to be careful about those who. So you do need to be careful about those who have not done business with your city yet, but might be in, offering you something as a way of courting your business in the future. So let's talk briefly about what exceptions are available under this statute. The first is honoraria. So if you are offered a honoraria for some compensation for a speaking engagement or something honorific in that sort of way, that would fall into an exception that allows the gift then, if you will, to be permissible. You don't have to accept it. You can always choose to say no. But if you do accept it and say, yes, I will accept that gift card for $25, something nominal, in our opinion, something significant like a Lexus car would not be appropriate within the spirit of the statute. But if you choose to accept it, you can, the nominal honoraria, then you can do so without having committed a class-one misdemeanor. The next exception is souvenirs and advertising items of nominal value. So again, let's say you go to a conference and there's a vendor exhibit hall and you get squishy, the squishy balls that relieve your tension, ballpoint pens, baseball hats. You see on the screen there the ubiquitous conference lanyard where your name tag goes, typically donated by a vendor with the vendor's name printed on it. If that vendor is one that has done business with your unit of government in the previous 12 months, is doing so currently, or potential future, you do not, you will not have committed a class-one misdemeanor when you hand, hang the lanyard around your neck because it falls within this exception. But again, it must be an item of nominal value. So if the vendor attempts to bring, consider, call an advertising item, again, the Lexus car, and they put their company logo on the side and say, hey, this is an advertising item and we want to give it to you, in our opinion, that would not fall within the intent of the statute. The third exception is meals at banquets. And this term is not defined either in the statute. And it's almost easier to think of what it's not than what it is. What it is not, in our opinion, is a vendor or contractor or potential future vendor or contractor taking you, the mayor, and your manager out to dinner at the nicest steakhouse in town. Our colleague, Jake Wicker here at the School of Government, who held this field for, for many, many years and was quite legendary, and it used to define meals at banquets along the line of you're in a hotel ballroom, the temperature in the room is either too hot, too cold, there's a head table with bunting and a boring speaker, and you're eating chicken. And so if you can endure all of that, then likely the meal at a banquet paid for by an otherwise prohibited giver would fall within the exception. Next are gifts to professional organizations of which you are a member. And so you, as a city, if you are a member of the League of Municipalities, and we are, we assume all of you are, then if the vendor gives a gift to the league, let's say the vendor sponsors the league conference reception, or they sponsor an event in conjunction with a league-sponsored event, and you attend that event and therefore benefit in some way from participating in that event, you've not committed a class-one misdemeanor by accepting that gift or favor, even though it is paid for by an otherwise prohibited giver, because the gift is to the professional organization, not to you personally. And that's an important point to underscore with this statute and these exceptions. The statute prohibits gifts being given to you. They do not prohibit gifts being given to professional organizations because that is not being given, a gift given directly to you. It also does not prohibit gifts being given to your unit of government itself. Cities and counties are statutorily authorized to accept gifts. And therefore, an otherwise prohibited giver could give a gift to the unit of government itself. But you have to be careful that if that occurs, you don't accept personally a gift that otherwise would be prohibited.
The fine, just, just to make clear, that, that, that helps it when you, when you're at the conference and they're, they're doing a raffle. If, if contractors or potential contractors have, you know, put stuff in there, you can, if you win it, you can have it.
If you want it, assuming you want to take it home.
Yes.
Sometimes the gifts are nice.
Just want to make that clear.
Yes, but you can take the, the raffle prize, the raffle drawing prize home, and you have not committed a class-one misdemeanor.
Yes.
Thank you, Freida, for making that point clear for all of our friends out there that might be attending the league's conference this spring. You can go to the conference, you can participate in all of the events at the conference, and you can win.
Eat all the shrimp.
You can eat all the shrimp and you can win the door prize if it's donated by an otherwise prohibited vendor, so long as that is all occurring within the context of the conference. And we're going to have a scenario on that point in just a minute to tease that out a bit more. But first, the final exception, which is the family and friends exception. The statute recognizes that elected officials and employees have family and friends that might do business with the unit of government, their unit of government. And so the statute allows you to accept gifts from family and friends who otherwise would be prohibited givers, so long as the gift is given in a context that it's clear that it's not related to the city's business. So if you are a council member and you and your brother have always taken each other out to lunch for your birthday, once you become elected to council, if your brother is doing business with the city, is a contractor with the city, you can continue to take each other out to lunch because that was your custom and your practice prior to you taking office or prior to your brother becoming a contractor with the city. However, if you and your brother haven't spoken to each other in the last 20 years, now you're elected to council, your brother is wanting to get city business, and your brother decides to start taking you to lunch, that might, could be interpreted as not being customary within your pre-existing relationship or not related to business. So those are the exceptions. If a gift falls within an exception, it's legally permissible to accept it, but you don't have to. You can always choose not to accept it if you don't, but if you do, you can do so and not have committed a class-one misdemeanor. But if the gift does not fall within one of these exceptions, it is prohibited and you should avoid accepting it.
And I just want to go back to our equation at the beginning. It's, it's something that this is, this is a, a opportunity to talk about, you have choices about your actions. So somebody might offer you that. You might say, okay, this is one of the exceptions, though I can do it. And then the next thing is, should you do it? So let's say there is this person who's taking you to lunch, is somebody's brother, but it turns out that there are lots of other contractors in, in the, in the town, and they see you eating with the brother, doesn't know, they, they might not know that the person's your, your brother, but the point being, there might be an ethical reaction to that. So you might think about, it, it's an exception, I can, I can do it, but is it the right thing to do? How does it look? How does it reflect on you and on your colleagues and on the, the, the city that you represent?
And so with that, that's a great segue, Freida, thank you, to some more poll questions for our audience. And the first one is this, and we're going to read the question and then we're going to ask you to vote yes or no. A city council member, a city council enters into a public-private partnership with a major league baseball team to build a stadium. The team's owner offers free season tickets to the council members and their families and invites them to sit in his skybox. Legally, can you accept those tickets?
So no, we're not saying should you, we're saying legally can you?
So Jamar has brought up the poll. And is, this is your chance time to vote.
Like, we're doing pretty good here?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I think a lot of folks have paid attention, Freida.
All right. Yes, the answer is no. This is a contract.
And Jamar, if you could move the polling off the screen. Thank you.
The answer is no, because this is a contract, and this is somebody who can't give you those things and you cannot accept them. I sometimes describe this as that, you know, this time of year, holidays of giving and receiving gifts is a blessing. It's a blessing to give and to receive. In this situation, it's a misdemeanor to give and to receive. So this is something, it's a little twist on that, on that adage. So in this case, yeah, the answer is no.
And so now, on to the next one. League, and again, the question is going to be legally can you accept it? A consultant who is not under contract with your city invites the city council members to join her for dinner during the League of Municipalities' annual conference. So legally, can you accept it? But go ahead and start voting. And you see the can you accept it, yes or no poll down there at the bottom of the screen. Jamar is just going to leave it right there for us. And let us know whether or not you think legally you can accept that invitation. Uh, this is, we're going to have some interesting results on this one, Freida. Jamar, if you could please broadcast the results for us. So it looks like most of you believed yes, you could. And I would suspect that you thought the answer was yes because it was a dinner invitation that was occurring during the league's conference.
And maybe you thought because they, they're not under contract.
And perhaps because they're not under contract. Legally, the answer is surprise, the answer is no. No, because unless the dinner was actually part of the league conference program itself, the paying for dinner would not be considered a gift to the professional association. The fact that it is simply occurring in conjunction with, on your free night at the conference, the fact that it is happening co-terminously with the conference does not make it actually part of the conference. The fact that the consultant is not under contract with the city is not a reason for it being legal either, because remember, the prohibition also applies to future vendors and contractors. And it is quite possible that the very reason the consultant wants to invite you to dinner is because the consultant is attempting to court your business. Now, there is one additional twist on this. Some might say, we, it was, it could be legal if we paid for our own dinner. We can go to dinner as a board with this consultant, but as long as we pay for our dinners, our dinner ourself, and the consultant does not, then it is legal, and that could have been the reason why some of you said yes. But Freida, do you think there's a problem with that answer? Where the whole board is going as a group?
Norma sneakily threw in one other issue to, to consider. What do you think about all of the board members or a majority of the members?
Intent.
Intent. It's possible that circumstances might turn to business. If they all go there and it's all completely social, that the, the engineer doesn't say anything about her services or anything, and you just talk about the weather or how good the conference is, if there is any discussion that's related to their work, that would be a viol, violation of the open meetings law.
So no, no, and no, for three reasons. Freida, do you want to take the next one?
Sure. Okay. Look at that Christmas basket.
Hmm.
All right, so it's holiday time, you get all these baskets. Let's say there's a gift basket that comes to town hall or addressed to our favorite city, city council with gratitude for your business, and they offer to pay for the city's employee holiday party. So what do you think about that? Looks like people are already voting.
Mm-hmm. That's good. Maybe people are just going to say no to everything because they're afraid to accept anything.
That's, that's a safe.
That's a safe approach, sure. It looks like most folks have voted now.
All right.
So Jamar, would you like to broadcast the results?
All right. Well, we've got, there's actually kind of two aspects for this, so let's just go ahead and say, we think that with respect to the basket, if that's to the council, if that's considered to be individual people on the council, it's pretty specific. This might be a little bit nuanced. I mean, I guess if they, you know, brought it to the front desk and said, this is for the town, that would probably be okay. But if it's for specifically targeted to the city council, the offer, let's, let's clear the, the poll, and let's ask the, the specific question about the offer to pay for the city's employee holiday party.
So question again, vote yes or no. Do you think the vendor legally could pay for the city's employee holiday party?
So we've got them scared. They think, they think.
Everybody's saying no.
Everybody's saying no. Okay.
Always a safe bet.
So, so this is a different thing, and we're going to talk about this a little more when we get to the next thing. But there's a difference between something that's a gift to the entity, in the same way we talked about the gift that goes to the league, it's to the organization, not to an individual. So I think actually that's something that they can do, but Norma's going to talk about that a little bit more, and this will be the last one.
Which segues right to our final scenario, which is this. Ask, and again, Jamar, if you could clear out the polling so that we could restart the polling and see what our friends think about this question. Is it legal? Can you accept? The city is considering purchasing a new fire truck. A manufacturer offers to pay for council members to travel to his production facility in Las Vegas to inspect the variety of customized fire trucks and firefighting equipment his company offers. Do you think it is legal for the manufacturer to pay for the council members' travel to the production facility? And it is not uncommon for local governments to want to go inspect, maybe view certain products. It might also arise.
Maybe play some golf, maybe have some nice dinner dinners.
That too, perhaps.
Perhaps.
Oh, you might find this a twist, a permutation on this fact pattern. Might be an economic development consultant that the city has hired wants to pay for council members to go view a potential economic development initiative, a project, and the project's located in Las Vegas, and the consultant wishes to pay for the council member's trip. So, Jamar, if you could broadcast the results for us, please. It appears as though the vast majority of you felt that the answer to this question was no. We say yes, but, and Jamar, you can take the, the polling down, if you could move that aside so that we can see the chat box in case friends have questions. Thank you very much, because this is our last scenario. Here is the explanation. And this discussion of gifts to the local government itself is related both to the fire truck example and to the previous example of the vendor offering to pay for the employee's holiday party. Those are gifts to the local government itself. And local governments are authorized to accept gifts. Again, these are gifts given to the unit, not being accepted by individual board members. And some examples are, that are very common, are little league sponsorships. Many parks and recs departments and local governments have, their parks and rec teams are sponsored by local businesses, some of whom might be doing business with the unit of government, and those are certainly legal. Other donations, and in our opinion, paying for travel under certain limited situations because the paying for the travel really is a gift to the unit of government. It is paying for an expense that the unit of government otherwise would have paid for. So in essence, it's defraying a cost, which is a form of a gift. But if the, the, in our view, these types of cost defraiments with travel are legally permissible first only if the local government has the legal authority to pay for that travel expense because it serves a public purpose. So first, that, that has to be met. Board members going on family vacation would never be permissible under any scenario. But a site visit for an economic development or a visit to view the manufacturing plant might be considered a public purpose. Then second, the local government in fact chooses to pay for that travel expense. So it's not just theoretical that they might pay for it, it's one that they actually they would approve, and the expense itself that the- And the expense itself that the vendor is paying for is reimbursable under that unit's local policy. So if you have a, a local travel policy that does not provide for reimbursement for golf games or casino chips or bar tabs for your council members, then if the vendor paid for those expenses, now you've gone from a gift to the unit of government defraying another, a legitimate cost to a gift to the individual council member himself or herself.
So we have a wonderful comment here. He's saying, yes, but it's paying for travel in, in hopes to garner a contract. And here we circle all the way back to the beginning. So even if it's legal, it might not be ethical. And again, that's, I think that's the point. Of course, all of these vendor contractor kinds of gifts and favors, they're not giving you these things because they love you or that they think you're doing such a good job. This is something that is just what happens in the private sector. You wine and dine the people, you give them, uh, nice things so they'll think good things about you and give you the contract. And the whole point here is with conflicts of interests and with gifts and favors, the whole point of this is to make sure as best we can, given that we're human, um, that we are making, you, you are making decisions for the purpose and for the benefit of the, the citizens and the, and the town, and not something that is driven by a, a close relationship or something financial that benefits you. And so that's, that's what we're talking about when we talk, when we talk about the undergirding of all of these statutes. They're designed to make it so that the, the citizens are the beneficiaries, not the individuals.
And thus, our final word on gifts is, when in doubt, do without. The point that Freida just made. It might be legal to accept it, but that doesn't make it ethical. So always remember, ask yourself those two questions. Is it legal? And then also, is it ethical?
And when you think about whether it's ethical, think about how the citizens and your staff and other people would react, even if you say it's legal.
And so this is bringing us now almost to the close of our two-hour program. We want to first highlight for you some additional resources. And by the way, nobody leave the webinar yet because we're getting ready to tell you how to access your ethics verification form. Let's not forget that. But first, some additional resources that we hope would be available, helpful for you, our county municipal government in North Carolina publication that includes the ethics chapter that you have available for the materials for this webinar. Our Coats Canon's Local Government Law Blog, Freida cited a couple of blog posts during our discussion today, and we hope you all are subscribers to Coats Canon's, um, as well as our other online resources for local governments in the context of ethics and your training requirements. And so we're nearing the end, and we want to thank you for your time and your engagement and the great questions and the great responses to the open chats and to the polls. Freida's contact information, as well as mine, is there on your screen, and we hope you'll feel free to reach out to us in the future if we, you have any questions or dilemmas that we can assist you with. And now the moment that you have all been waiting for patiently for two hours. One last thing. Don't forget your ethics verification form. The ethics verification form is required by law for you to have, that provides written verification that you have completed your ethics training. On the very next slide, so don't, don't try to click anything yet, we have one more slide to go. On the next slide, I'll give you specific instructions on how to download the verification form. By law, you are required to provide this form to your board clerk. Please do not send it here to us at the School of Government. The Ethics Training Statute requires that you provide written verification to your board clerk, and your board clerk will be happy to remind you of this, and your board clerk will be happy to keep it on file for you. The verification form, as, as you see it on the screen, is divided into two equal parts. One part you can fill out and keep for your own records, and the other part you fill out and give to your clerk to keep on file there at your town hall. And so now, on this slide, you can access the verification forms that I was describing. To download the ethics verification form, click on the underlined link that is titled "Elected Officials Verification." The verification form is a PDF document, and that, because it's a PDF document, it might open in slightly different ways depending on which browser you're currently using. If you experience issues in opening the link, please contact your internal IT folks to get assistance with download and saving the file. You can also cut and paste, or copy and paste, the URL that you see there on the screen into a separate browser tab, and you can open the form that way. And we're going to leave this slide up for a little while to make sure everybody has an opportunity to download the form. So when the PDF form opens, when you click on the link, or if you copy and paste this link into a separate browser tab, when you have the PDF form open, save it to your desktop or save it in a folder. Because after you have saved the verification form to your printer, you will then print it out, you will fill it in, you will give one part to your board clerk, and you'll save the other part for your records. Or you might be sitting there with your board clerk right now, who is doing this for you, because your board clerks can be very helpful in managing these forms. So while you are saving the form to your computer, you're still connected to our webinar. If you want to review the last slide again, please click the webinar icon in your task bar that appears at the bottom of your computer screen or up in your browser. Please do make sure to save the verification form to your computer before the end of the webinar session. Once the session is over, you will not have access to the form unless you have saved it to your computer. Now, for those of you who are attorneys and who wish to self-report this webinar for general CLE credit to the state bar, click on the second link you see on your screen, which is titled Attorney's CLE Form. This link will take you to the state bar webpage that provides the self-report form and the instructions and the downloadable self-report form. And then just follow the instructions on the form and send your completed form to the state bar. Please do not send the CLE form to the School of Government, it needs to go to the bar. Again, if you're having trouble opening or saving the forms, please contact your local IT staff member. Sometimes it can take a minute or two for the link to open because everyone is attempting to access it at the same time. And remember, you can also copy and paste the URL you see on the screen into a separate browser tab and open the verification form that way. Finally, we would be grateful if you would take a minute to complete our webinar evaluation by clicking on the link that appears at the bottom of the slide on your screen. Your input is invaluable to us in helping us serve you and bring to you topics of interest. The evaluation will open in a new browser tab, but don't panic. You can still complete the evaluation as you are connected to the webinar while you're also downloading your verification form. If you want to return to the slide, then just click the webinar icon in the task bar that appears either at the bottom of your computer screen or up in your browser. In addition, an email will be sent out today to all registrants with a link to our evaluation survey. We'd appreciate your sharing this email with other members of your group who watched today's webinar, so that everyone has an opportunity to give us your feedback. We do hope you'll take a moment to provide us with your comments on today's presentation, and also let us know what topics you'd like to see covered in the future. Your input is very important to us. Now, while you're downloading your forms and completing the evaluation, um, we want to offer a final word of thanks for our team that brought the webinar to you today, Jamar, Tugie, and our help desk folks, and for all that they do to make this webinar and all of our webinars here at the School of Government run smoothly. And of course, we want to thank you, our audience, for your time, your great questions and your comments, and of course, your service to your communities. We appreciate all that you do, and I'm going to turn it over to Freida for one final goodbye.
Goodbye, good luck, and call us if you need help.
Thanks so much.
All right. I know as much as y'all would like to do another hour of that. Thanks actually to Lisa and Joey and everybody who was responsible for putting this together, getting us over our required ethics, uh, training hump. Does anybody need a break? I don't. They gave you a headache? Cheryl, do you really need a break? You gotta go change. Okay, that's fine. All right, okay. Um, let's go on then into, uh, next on the agenda, we have a, a closed session for purposes of economic development personnel. Um, I'll need a motion to do, go into closed session. All right, I think I heard Chris Williams, and I'm going with Cyril Jefferson for a second on that one. I'll call the roll for the vote. Michael Holmes, how do you vote? Tyron Johnson. Monica Peters. Britt Moore. Chris Williams. Wesley Hudson. Dick Jones. Cyril Jefferson. The mayor votes aye, so that is approved by a vote of nine to zero. We're now in, in closed session, as soon as our IT staff gets us in closed session.
We are back in open session. High Point City Council. Mr. Holmes may have stepped out, so we'll wait on him to return. The, why don't we go ahead and do the items that are on the, on the agenda. Go ahead and talk about the resolution for the lease of the city-owned property at 2111 Little Avenue. Is there someone here to talk about Little Avenue?
Not a problem. So you should have a member in your, this is property that is currently owned by the city of High Point. We are contemplating transferring this property. It'll be on your agenda next Monday, actually, for the consideration of the transfer of the title of the property to the CDC for the purpose of providing low-mob income housing. There is already a buyer out that gets disqualified, and we need to get into the property sooner. It's just a few days. We would like to go ahead and enter into a short-term lease with the buyer to allow her to go ahead and. And that's the purpose of this lease.
Everybody familiar with this? Anyone need to ask questions? Okay. With that, I'll go ahead then and make the motion for approval. This item is our second.
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. Any, any questions before we vote? A hearing done, I'll call the roll. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore?
Aye.
Mayor for Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson? And mayor votes aye, so that resolution is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Next item on the agenda is a resolution supporting the Guilford County Continuum of Care. Is there someone to brief us on this?
Parkson. Council, this agenda item came out of the Community Development Committee, and the committee's been briefed two times by Dr. Palmer about the effort to maintain the existing countywide continuum of care. The committee actually asked that this resolution be forwarded to your attention and for your consideration. As you know, the city of Greensboro has floated the idea that they would leave the continuum of care and operate independently of the existing structure. Staff supports the existing operation as it is. Dr. Palmer has briefed the committee, and the feeling was that this should be brought to your attention for your consideration. So Dr. Palmer actually drafted the resolution that's before you.
Any questions for Mr. Parkson? Gotcha. With that, then I'll make the motion for approvals. They're a second. Who was that? Mr. Jefferson? Any, any questions or clarifications? Hearing done, Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore? Mayor for Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. That resolution passes by a vote of nine to zero. Next is contract for approval regarding fire station number two.
Yes, Deputy Chief Wright with the Fire Department. Building was built in 19...
Building was built in 1966. Obviously, we are way behind with energy efficiency, as well as the looks of the building is getting pretty bad. We did hold a competitive bid process through the purchasing department, and we would recommend that SNS Construction be awarded that bid of $180,000.
Any questions? A hearing done, I'll make the motion for approvals or a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Johnson, I believe. Any questions for the vote? Or comments? A hearing done, Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore? Mayor pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, so that resolution is approved by a vote of nine to zero. We will now need a... I will make the motion to suspend the rules to add a couple of items. These were items discussed in our most recent closed session regarding personnel. It would be to add a vote on an amendment to Section 4 of our personnel resolution and the creation of a deputy public services director position.
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Councilman Jefferson. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? A hearing done. Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore? Mayor pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
And Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye, so the motion to suspend the rules to add those items is approved. First item is, I'll make a motion to approve the amendments to Section 4 of the Personnel Resolution as presented by staff. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Moore. Is there any discussion? Okay. Hearing done, Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore? Mayor pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye, so that item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Next, I'll make a motion for approval of the creation of a public services director position. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the mayor pro Tim. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the motion sounded like you said position for director. Is it director or deputy director?
It's a deputy, creation of deputy public services director.
God, I just wanted to, because I think the motion just said director of public services, it sounded like.
Okay, sorry, I misspoke.
I misheard it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Hearing done, Councilman Holmes, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Peters?
Aye.
Councilman Moore? Mayor pro Tim Williams?
Aye.
Councilman Hudson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman Jefferson?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. That item is approved by a vote of nine to zero. Don't believe there's anything left on our agenda. So... Any motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Moved by Councilman Moore, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Jones. Is there anyone opposed to adjourned? Hearing no opposition, meeting is now adjourned.